Thank you, Mr Saisius. Leave is granted for that purpose.
Commissioner, before hearing evidence from Mr Medina.
Yes.
May I tender another document? It is part of TB8. Of course, I wish to show it to this witness. We intend to tender it separately.
Okay.
It is a document entitled Local Government 2024 Financial Audit, dated the 31st of March 2025. And the identification number of the document is INQ.
Yes.
Dot zero two three dot zero zero one dot zero zero four zero.
Zero zero four zero?
Yes.
And that's to be part of Exhibit Eight?
When we tender Exhibit Eight, Exhibit Eight at the moment, there are some requests for non-publication order.
Oh, I see.
That we're still dealing with.
So do you want to tender this now, or should I mark it for identification to be wrapped up in the tender?
Yes, that's probably easier.
All right, that document will be MF5-4? I think we're up to four. Thank you.
I call Brad Medina.
Yes, just come forward, please, sir. Do you take an oath or an affirmation, Mr Medina?
Affirmation. Thank you.
Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence that you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, please say I do.
I do.
Yes, Mr Medina.
Please state your full name.
My name is Bradley James Medina.
And what is your occupation?
I'm an Assistant Auditor General in our financial audit branch at the Audit Office of New South Wales.
Mr Medina, can I commence with asking you some general questions? The Audit Office of New South Wales, and indeed the Auditor General, broadly, what is that office's role?
The Audit Office of New South Wales, headed by the Auditor General, is a body established under the Government Sector Audit Act to conduct audits of government bodies within New South Wales. That includes our state sector agencies, those bodies controlled by the State of New South Wales, state-controlled universities, and local government, including local councils, joint organisations, and county councils. We have two main functions that we focus our time on, and those are conducting financial audits, that is, expressing an opinion on the financial statements of audited entities, or undertaking a performance audit, that is, an audit into the effectiveness, efficiency, and economy of a particular aspect of government administration or lawfulness.
The last audit that you referred to, have there been performance audits that have focused on a particular aspect of local government?
There has. In our performance audit function, which is, to give a sense of the Auditor General's mandate, we'll have an annual audit work programme that talks to about 15 to 20 performance audits per annum. So differently to our financial statement audits, where we're mandated to come into an entity that we are required to express an opinion on the financial statements, and that tends to be at the balance date every year, a performance audit is a discretionary activity of the Auditor General, for which he undertakes a sector-wide risk assessment, including covering local government and our state sector, and designs a series of performance audits which may look into a particular aspect of public administration, again focusing on efficiency, economy, and effectiveness. In terms of the topics, they're a matter for the Auditor General, and they are prioritised by risk, and they're explained in our annual audit work programme. Those focus areas may change over time.
Just as an example, has there been a recent performance audit looking at local councils and cybersecurity?
There has been a range of performance audits into the local government sector. We've looked recently at cybersecurity. We've also looked, we have a current audit underway, which has not yet tabled in the Parliament, dealing with coastal management, which involves the local government sector.
Coastal management.
Coastal management, so the management of New South Wales coastline.
Now, I want to ask you some questions about the first type of audit, which you described as the financial audit.
Mr Medina, whilst counsel assisting is just grabbing that, don't take this as a criticism, because it's not, but could I just trouble you to maybe just speak a little slower when answering? There's some people down the line taking it down, and I'm taking some notes by hand, so that'll assist us all. Thank you.
The financial audit, which you described as a mandated audit, local councils produce financial statements at the end of every financial year?
That's correct.
And is it those financial statements produced by a local council that the Audit Office will audit?
That's correct.
I want to take you to an annual financial statement of Liverpool City Council, and it's the last available annual financial statements that we have for the year ended 30 June 2024. And could the document INQ dot zero zero one dot zero zero one dot zero three six two be brought up on the screen and also livestreamed? Now, up on the screen, you can see that's the cover page of the annual financial statements. If we can go down a little bit to the bottom, or Liverpool City Council for that financial year ending the 30th of June 2024.
That's correct.
Now, I first want to take you to part of these statements, and that is found at underscore zero zero nine one. And this document is headed Independent Auditor's Report, Report on General Purpose Financial Statements for Liverpool City Council. And then there is Correspondence Address to the Councillors, where an opinion is expressed, basis for opinion, and if we can go to the next page, you can see from the heading Other Information, Councillor's Responsibilities for the Financial Statements, Auditor's Responsibilities for the Audit of the Financial Statements. And if we can go to underscore zero zero nine three, there's a signature of the Min Lee, Delegate of the Auditor General of New South Wales. Now, Ms Lee, she is also an employee of the Audit Office.
That's correct.
And by signing this letter with the requisite opinion and other information, does that indicate that she was one of the people who conducted the audit of the financial statements?
That's, that's correct. So the Auditor General, under the local, the Terms of the Local Government Act 1993, is the mandated financial statements auditor for all local government entities in New South Wales, including councils, joint organisations, and county councils. In respect of the Auditor General's responsibilities in the sector, they are delegated to various officials within our office, including Ms Lee, who is the engagement controller, so the person responsible for forming the opinion on the financial statements of, in this case, Liverpool Council, and that's her delegated role. So her role is to conduct an audit, obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement, and issue an auditor's report, which she has done here.
All right. And then if we could go to the page which is underscore zero zero nine four. And I can take, you can see from that page, it's a letter again from Ms Lee, addressed to the Mayor of the Council, entitled Report on the Conduct of the Audit for the Year Ended 30 June 2024. And if we could jump to page underscore zero zero nine nine. And if we can just go towards the bottom of that page, you can see again the signature block of Min, Min, Ms Lee and her signature.
That's correct.
If we can jump back to underscore zero zero nine four. This particular document, which I'll take you to in a little while, how does it sit with the previous report that I just showed you, which was addressed to the councillors, while this one is addressed specifically to the Mayor? How do they kind of sit together?
In terms of the Independent Auditor's Report, that is a requirement of the Australian auditing standards, that at the conclusion of a financial statement audit, we're required to express an opinion on the subject matter, in this case, the financial statements. What the Independent Auditor's Report, which is largely form and content with the wording driven by the Australian auditing standards, is to describe the types of procedures that were performed, the types of evidence that, in this case, Ms Lee, the engagement controller, has obtained in the course of her audit, and to convey whether or not, in the professional judgement of the engagement controller, there's been enough evidence gathered as part of a financial audit to conclude that the financial statements are free from material misstatement, either due to fraud or error. The purpose of that first report, the Independent Auditor's Report, is to also explain the auditor's responsibilities. And so, under the subsection or the heading Responsibilities of the Auditor, it will discuss the types of procedures we may perform in a financial statements audit.
Can I just pause there? Could we go back to underscore zero zero nine two, please? And if we can go towards the bottom of the page, you were referring to the section under the heading Auditor's Responsibilities?
That's correct. And so it's set out in this section, which explains the objectives of the audit. That is to express an opinion on the financial statements, whether they are free from material misstatement as a whole, whether due to fraud or error, and issue this Independent Auditor's Report. The section here also conveys that reasonable assurance is not absolute assurance, and the particular subject matter that we're assuring here is the compliance of the financial statements with the Local Government Accounting Code, Australian Accounting Standards and other legislative requirements. The, the purpose of this section is to indicate that misstatements, if they're considered material, they could influence the users of the financial statements. So the basis of our audit is to aggregate sufficient and appropriate audit evidence to confirm whether those financial statements are free from material misstatement. In this case, for the 2024 financial statements, our opinion was that there was sufficient and appropriate audit evidence available to confirm that the financial statements complied with the code and were free from a statement.
All right. And then how does that fit with the next document addressed to the Mayor, which was the Report on the Conduct of the Audit? And sorry, if we could go to page zero zero nine four, underscore.
The Report of the, on the conduct of the audit is a specific requirement of Section 417 of the Local Government Act. So those requirements obviously mandate the Auditor General to undertake the financial statements audit of councils and require us to provide an independent auditor's report. That was the first document we just discussed. The second document is a requirement of the Local, of the Local Government Act, and specifically aspects of the Local Government Accounting Code, which require us as auditors to communicate certain information that has come to our attention during the course of the audit that may be of interest to the users of the financial statements, the council, or others in the sector. So the, the specific requirements of this report would be to communicate significant issues if they were to arise. Now, that's a matter of judgement of the engagement controller. It's not a bright line test, but it's, it would be to convey those matters of interest, which are, were fundamental to the conduct of our audit, and which we think the reader of the financial statements, including the Mayor, would be required to know in order to understand our auditor's report, particularly if we'd made specific recommendations to council on a very, on a significant matter. The other purpose of this report is to confirm legislative compliance as it pertains particularly to the construction of the financial statements and the records that support them. So we will include a segment of this report which draws out whether or not we've aggregated evidence that there has been non-compliance with the Local Government Act as to the way the financial statements have been constructed. The third item, which appears on screen at the moment, is really around discussion of particular areas of interest in the financial statements of the council. That is, how has the council performed for, for the period ended, in this case, 30 June 2024, and its financial position? The matters discussed in this report, for example, we have operating result with a number of subheadings on the screen now, are driven by the Local Government Accounting Code, which specifies the type of information as auditors we should include in this report. And so if you were to look at the format of this report for Liverpool City Council, it would be very similar for the 128 other councils that we do issue reports for in the sector.
Now, can I just ask you, this first section we've got, or jump to, we've got an income statement, and there is a reference to operating result, and particular figures are picked up for this financial year and the previous financial year. Then jumping to the next page, underscore zero zero nine five, we've got a heading Statement of Cash Flows. And then if you go to the other page, zero zero nine six, we've got a financial position heading. Can I take you back to underscore zero zero nine four, the income statement? Its interrelationship with the financial statements published by the council is if we go back to, in this document, underscore zero 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 seven. This is within the financial statements, the income statement.
That's correct.
For the council for that financial year. And is it a matter that within, we can jump back to it in a minute, the zero zero nine four income statement, operating result, it would appear that Ms Lee has picked up on certain entries within that income statement?
That's correct.
So for example, the first line item there, rates and annual charges, if we jump back to underscore zero zero nine four, that entry is repeated there, but there's also that there's acknowledgement that there's been a variance between the two years' results.
That's correct.
And if we then go across the page to zero zero nine five, at the top, it refers to that entry, that the revenue increased by 14.2 million, and then allocat, or states that it's due to a rate peg increase of a certain percentage, and also an increase in ratable properties.
That's correct.
So is it in identifying relevant parts of the council's income statement, Ms Lee is also providing some more information about why with particular items, there's been the evidence she saw about particular variance, or the reason for variance?
I wouldn't describe it necessarily as evidence, though these things would be formed on the basis of the evidence that we had before us. The purpose of this section is to present certain items from the income statement, as, as you've drawn, drawn out, and then to provide an explanation of why there has been a movement between the financial years. So the comparative year being, in this case, 22, the comparative year in this case being 2223, and we obviously have 2324 as the current year, and a description of why that movement has occurred, why that variance has occurred. It's a statement of fact. It doesn't describe a particular performance by the council, but it does describe the circumstances which led to the change, in this case, of rates and annual.
Certain line items within that financial statement. The identification of those line items which are reported and a variance is noted. Is that mandated by, for example, the Local Government Code of, accounting code? Or is that a matter of matters that the auditor thinks are relevant?
It's a matter of what has been mandated or suggested, I should, I should clarify, suggested in the, in the code as areas that we may discuss as part of providing a report on the conduct of the audit. Of course, the Auditor General has discretion with these products to provide particular information. But in this case, the particular line items from the income statement that you can see displayed on the previous page would be ones that were suggested as part of the code.
Now, if we can just move down the bottom of that page, zero zero nine five, we then move to Statement of Cash Flows. And again, if we could jump back to page underscore zero zero eleven. This is in the financial statements of the council, Statement of Cash Flows. And again, is it a similar procedure that the, I'll just say the auditor, the auditor is picking up particular information contained in that Statement of Cash Flows and reproducing that on page zero zero nine five, if we can jump back to that?
That's correct. So the Statement of Cash Flows comprises part of the primary audited financial statements, which we've expressed an opinion on, that is the Independent Auditor's Report. The purpose of the Report on the Conduct of the Audit is to provide that summary level information. So the graphical representation that you can see on the right-hand side of this page is information at a subtotal level, that subtotal of operating activities cash, investing activities cash, and financing activities cash derived from the Statement of Cash Flows. You will note that this includes the 2024 financial year, the 2023 financial year, but it includes the previous audited financial statements that would have occurred for 2022.
Is there any reason why in this particular section, we've gone back to 2022?
2022, well, the three years is our general preference for the way in which sort of the trend information around some of the information is, is compiled. And so three years is the practice that we use across our audit book.
Then if we can go to zero zero nine six, we then have a reference to financial position and two subheadings, cash and investments and debt?
Yes.
Financial position is a reference to the good old assets and liabilities or the balance sheet?
That's right. The Statement of Financial Position, which comprises all of the council's assets, liabilities, and equity.
And if we jump back to zero 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 nine, again, that's the Statement of Financial Position for the council for that 30 June 2024. And from particular line items in that statement, if we can jump back to zero zero nine six, particular matters dealing with total cash, cash equivalents and investments, and then debt have been identified in this part of the report?
That's correct. The information in this part of the report, under the subheading Financial Position, and then Cash and Investments and Debt, these are numbers that are described in the Statement of Financial Position, the balance sheet that we've just seen, but they're broken down at a more disaggregated level, which reflects information that are included in the notes to the financial statements. So as a practicality, on the balance sheet, there'll be a line item cash, there'll be a line item investments, there'll be note disclosure that the council has prepared and we have audited, that will have more information, which has been, which has caused us to be able to describe the cash, if we took cash and investments, the cash and investments that are subject to external restrictions or internal restrictions.
So instead of, in a sense, looking at the financial position and then the requisite notes within the financial statements, this is, in a sense, a summary or an amalgamation of certain aspects of that?
That's correct.
Can I then turn to the next, ah, before I do that, could you, we go back to zero zero nine four? And the second paragraph, I expressed an unmodified opinion on the council's general purpose financial statements. The reference to an unmodified opinion, what does that refer to?
This refers to the opinion expressed, in this case, by Ms Lee in the Independent Auditor's Report, which was the earlier document that we reviewed. The Independent Auditor's Report, it requires, the conduct of, let me take that back. The, the purpose of conducting a financial audit is for us to express an opinion whether the financial statements have been prepared in all material respects with the Local Government Accounting Code, and by virtue of the Act, as was Australian Accounting Standards, and to express an opinion. So in this case, expressing an unmodified opinion represents our view that we have obtained enough evidence, sufficient and appropriate evidence, in the course of our audit to express to, to a reasonable assurance standard that the financial statements presented by the council do not contain material misstatements. If the engagement controller, in this case, was of the view that that was not correct and that there was the reasonable likelihood of a material misstatement, we would express a different type of opinion, or the modified opinion, and that has a range of different connotations, depending on the type of errors or issues that we identify in our audit. So just on this, in this case, for 30 June 2024, we've issued an unmodified opinion on the council's general purpose financial statements, which is the representation of the auditor's view that the financial statements complied with the accounting requirements and were free from material misstatement. As I mentioned before, this is done to a reasonable assurance level. It is not absolute assurance, but that is the formation of our opinion.
Can I take you back to zero zero nine six? Now, in this section, which is headed Performance, we have a, a heading Performance Measures, and then doing an overview of the section of this report, we have subheadings with an operating performance ratio. And if we go across to zero zero nine seven, Own Source Operating Revenue Ratio, Unrestricted Current Ratio, over to page 98, Debt Service Cover Ratio, Rates and Annual Charges Outstanding Percentage, and then at nine, page 99, a Cash Expense Cover Ratio. Can we go back to zero zero nine six? These particular ratios which are set out in this section, are they included because of the dictates of the code? Or is it a matter of the discretion of the auditor to pick certain ratios which the auditor, auditor is the view are relevant?
These particular ratios are established by the Office of Local Government, as it currently sits within the Department of Planning, Housing and Infrastructure. So each of the ratios that follows after the subheading Performance Measures are set, the framework is set by the Office of Local Government. This report seeks to indicate whether or not a council has met a particular ratio and a factual explanation as to why that may or may not have occurred, based on the information we've obtained and the presentation of the audited financial statements.
In the financial statements, there are also in section, I think it's the part of the notes, section H, which is a Statement of Performance Measures Consolidated Results Graphs. Could we go to that page, please, zero zero eight eight? There you'll see with the first graph, a description of operating performance ratio. And there's a graph there where, conveniently colour-coded. If it's in a green colour, it means it's reached the benchmark. If it's in the red, it hasn't. Again, with a description of Again, with a description of the purpose of operating performance ratio and some commentary on that financial year's result. This section, these are these, the ratios that have been determined by the council in preparing its financial statements.
My understanding of this disclosure, and I would note that it is unaudited. So this is not part of the financial statements where we do express an opinion. So the independent auditor's report that we discussed previously does not cover this disclosure, which is why we can see at the top of the page, additional council disclosures, unaudited, draws that to the attention of the user of the financial statements. That being said, as I understand it, these are the ratios that we have otherwise reported on in a report on the conduct of the audit, compiled by the council and including commentary by the council on why a particular ratio may not, may or may not have been.
Could we go back to zero, zero, nine, six? With the operating performance ratio there towards the bottom of the page. Does the auditor independently perform the analysis and calculation for the determination of the operating performance ratio? Or do they rely on that analysis that I just took you to in section H of the financial statement?
The information that we've presented here in the report on the conduct of the audit is based on the audited financial statements. So if we took the operating performance ratio as an example, the description of how this is calculated and the information that forms the basis of the particular result, whatever it may be, is driven by the audited financial statements. And so in preparing this report, our audit teams or our auditors and the engagement controller has reasonable assurance that the balances that go into those calculations are reasonable and fairly stated.
Now, with the operating performance ratio, can you explain what does that ratio look at?
This is one of the ratios that's been established by the Office of Local Government. It sets a particular target result, similar to the remainder of these ratios.
Can I just stop you? A target result is described as a benchmark?
A benchmark, that's right. And it's determined by the Office of Local Government. Not have, which is provided in analysis. This operating performance ratio is all around understanding how a council has contained its operating expenditure within operating revenue. And so importantly, it includes a number of adjustments to work from the financial statements that we've been discussing to get back to the numbers. So we take out items including capital grants and contributions, fair value adjustments. So fair value adjustments to assets that occur as part of accounting processes and non-cash transactions. So they're removed from this ratio and the reversal of revaluation decrements. So again, a fair value adjustment assumes an asset that a revaluation decrement assumes an asset value may have gone down. But again, as part of a valuation process, it's a non-cash transaction. And so in describing the ratio, the Office of Local Government has set up the framework. The framework is it is calculated in this particular fashion. They have determined this is what the benchmark should be for the sector. This report is providing a visual representation and our view on whether a benchmark was achieved during the year. And again, why this may not have been or why it had changed from previous periods. We're required to offer some commentary that provides some context as to reasons for movements within these ratios.
All right. So looking at the graph next to it, again, to state the obvious. Under the graph, you've got the OLG benchmark, which is greater than zero percent. And just looking at the graph, it would appear in twenty twenty three, the benchmark was satisfied because there's a positive column there.
That's correct.
And then, but if you're looking at twenty twenty four, the column under the line with zero would reflect that the benchmark hasn't been reached.
That's correct.
And again, looking at the text on towards the left, as you identified or commented upon, there is reference to the auditor's view as to why the ratio has deteriorated from the twenty twenty three result to twenty twenty four.
In this case, as it is a change in ratio that represents a deterioration, that is explained.
I know you said this is part of the operating performance ratio that's required by the OLG code.
It's required by the OLG. So as at thirty June, twenty twenty four, these were the benchmarks that councils were required to measure their performance against. Again, the auditor general has not determined the benchmarks. So in this case, the benchmark of greater than zero percent has not been a view of the auditor general. It's very much a view of the Office of Local Government. This report is providing some transparency around whether the council has achieved that benchmark and reasons for movements between years. So if I draw you to the explanation in the bottom left of this page, it's a statement of fact. Based on the financial statements, the ratio has deteriorated due to a reduction in operational grants, an increase in employee benefits and on costs, an increase in materials and services and borrowing costs. So they're the primary financial statement line items which have varied from year to year that would explain a change in the ratio of performance. What this report doesn't do and what it's not designed to do, and we do not express an opinion on, is whether that's appropriate or not. That's a matter, I guess, for the council as management and a management in determining the appropriate level of performance. This is a statement of fact as to how financially the council has performed.
And I just ask you, you identified employee benefits and on costs. What are on costs?
On costs are a requirement of the accounting code and the accounting standards. So they represent valuation differences, for example, the accrual of leave, which may be valued in a particular way. The accrual of superannuation, which may be valued in a particular way. In accrual based accounting, we'll obviously have our salaries and wages, our leave taken, particular payments paid to individual employees. These are the accounting adjustments representing items such as leave.
Can I take you to zero, zero, nine, seven? The next ratio is the own source operating revenue ratio. Would you explain what that looks at and what it takes into account?
This ratio, again, determined by the OLG, who also determined the benchmark for this ratio of greater than sixty percent, measures the own source, measures the council's fiscal flexibility. So it's the degree in which the council relies on external funding sources such as grants or other contributions as part of its revenue mix, so the ability to fund its operations.
The issue of relying on external funding resources, it refers to operating grants and contributions. Is the contribution a reference to the contributions made in respect to property developments where there's the, can be, I think it's the section two point eleven contributions?
I'd need to, in the context of this particular council explaining this ratio, I'd need to have a look at that in some more detail. So I'm not sure that I'd be able to necessarily bring that to the fore. This is around funding sources where it's not a regular source of funding. So grants may occur from time to time, particular programs, particular support from government, particular support for activities compared with those more regular sources of income, that is rates collected by the council. And so the ratio is really measuring as a total own source revenue bucket. Does that lean more towards those regular sources of funding? Or does it comprise more grants or other items which may not be continuous in there?
Maybe one off for years.
Possibly, yeah. Without being able to get behind this and explain further, I'd have to leave it at that sort of general answer.
And as you've indicated, the benchmark is not determined by the audit office. It comes from OLG. And again, looking at the graph, it would appear for twenty twenty four, the council did reach the benchmark.
That's correct because we had the view that of the mix, it was sixty three percent, which would be greater than the OLG's benchmark of greater than sixty percent.
And sorry, the benchmark of sixty percent, does that mean if overall revenue is a hundred dollars, it would be sixty three dollars worth funded from your regular sources of income?
Expressed as, you're checking my maths now, but expressed as a, as a percentage, that is the concept.
Even the lawyers in the room probably got that one.
Commissioner, I do note the time.
Yes.
Would it be convenient to take a lunch break at this point?
Yes. Yes, Mr Medina, we're going to break for lunch. We'll resume at two fifteen. If you wouldn't mind being back, you ready to go at about two ten? Be nice, Greg. We'll adjourn until two fifteen. Thank you. Be nice, Greg. We'll adjourn until 2:15. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner.
Commissioner, before resuming the evidence, there are two other documents that I wish to take Mr Medina to.
Yes.
They have been recently produced pursuant to a notice and it's anticipated that they will be included in TB8 when that folder of documents is tendered. They are two Audit Risk and Improvement Committing Minutes from the 26th of February 2025 and the 28th of April 2025. May I give an indication that already in the evidence before the inquiry, an extract from the Audit Risk and Improvement Committing Minutes from the 26th of February is already in evidence and there was no objection to that. Given that this has just been raised and I do wish to show Mr Medina these documents at the moment, could they be just marked for identification?
Yes, have they got document IDs as yet?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The 26th of February 2025 is, excuse me, LCC dot zero one four dot zero zero two dot one four one one.
That'll be MFI five.
And then the 28th of April committee minutes of this year, LCC zero one four zero zero two one four one two.
That will be MFI six.
Excuse me.
Yes, of course.
Mr Medina, I want to return to that report on the conduct of the audit for the year ended, June 2024. And it is document reference INQ zero zero one zero zero one zero three six two underscore zero zero nine seven. And on the live screaming, screaming, streaming too, please. If we could just move down the page. I wanted to move to that ratio unrestricted current ratio. What is, what information in the financial statements is that based on?
This ratio is based on the, based on the 30 June 2024 financial statements. The coverage of special, the coverage of liabilities to be covered by unrestricted assets on a short term basis. Current assets.
So for example, if there was a property with a registered mortgage over it, it wouldn't be taken into account. The value of that asset wouldn't be taken into account.
This would be current assets, which wouldn't tend to be, without looking into the numbers that sit behind this report on the conduct and the financial statements in detail. These would tend to be current assets and unlikely to be.
Subject to a liability along those lines.
Unlikely to be non-current assets, which tend to be holdings of property, plant, equipment, et cetera.
So it looks at the value of current assets. And what does it then look at?
The ability of those assets to service short term obligations. So liabilities, the ability to service current liabilities.
So it's really looking at current assets and current liability.
Yes.
Again, the OLG has established a benchmark of greater than, is it 1.5?
My understanding is it's 1.5 times.
And based on the graph there for 2024, the OLG benchmark was not reached.
Yes.
And why is the unrestricted current ratio? Why do you look at that? What's its, in a sense, usefulness?
So whether the benchmark is useful or not is a matter for the Office of Local Government as they set the performance.
No, that's fine. I'm just looking at the ratio. Why?
In terms of the ratio, and specific to local government, provides the, or provides a representation of the council's ability to meet its short term obligations as they fall due.
By looking at its ability to access the value of the current asset?
By, by the ability to access current assets to meet its short term or current obligations.
We'll go to the next page, zero zero nine eight. And at the beginning of the page, there is a reference to a debt service cover ratio. Again, would you explain what does this ratio examine?
This ratio is a measurement of the operating cash available to service debt, particularly including interest, principal and lease payments.
How does that differ from the unrestricted current ratio?
This is, this is covering a particular item, which is debt and debt defined as including interest, principal and lease payments.
So it is including liabilities that arise from a liability on a, along, sorry, not a current liability.
For those items classified as debt in the financial statements.
Regardless of whether they arise from a mortgage on a a non-current liability.
Correct.
And again, here there's a benchmark set by the OLG, which is greater than two times. And looking at the graph for 2024, that benchmark was not reached.
That's correct. For 2024, the calculated ratio is 1.8, which is left.
Why is a debt service cover ratio useful?
Again, it's a matter for the OLG in terms of their, their framework for performance of councils. But this ratio provides a visualization or a, or a frame in which to understand a council's ability to service its debt obligations based on operating cash available.
And the reference to operating cash, what does that refer to?
Operating cash is a term that refers to operating cash flows that are reported in the statement of cash flows, which is one of the financial statement items that we discussed before.
If we can move down that page, zero zero nine eight, we then have a rates and annual charges outstanding percentage, which again refers to an OLG established benchmark. What does the rates and annual charges outstanding percentage, what parts of the financial statement is it looking at?
It's looking at total rates revenue. So the revenue that a council has collected from rates. Against the outstanding receivables or debtors at the balance date. So at 30 June, what's left over, uncollected in cash terms.
The benchmark set by the OLG is less than 5% for metropolitan councils. Looking at the graph was the result for 2024 for this percentage, 8.5?
I agree, 8.5.
Does that indicate that the benchmark established by the OLG has not been met?
That's correct. As indicated in the sort of text on the bottom left, the council did not meet the benchmark during the 2024 reporting period.
Now, it's accepted that this arises from OLG requirements. But again, the utility or use of determining the rates and annual charges outstanding percentage, what is its utility?
Again, the particular benchmark of 5% for metro councils, less than 5% for metro councils is a matter for the OLG. But this is really describing uncollected or potentially collectible cash at balance date each financial year that is available from the head of revenue, which could be described as rates.
Would we go to the next page, zero zero nine nine? And we have a cash expense cover ratio. What does that ratio examine?
This is a liquidity ratio and it indicates the number of months that the council can continue to pay for its immediate expenses without any additional cash inflow. So I think importantly for this ratio, it assumes that no cash will be received to meet those operating expenses. And so it's about the cash that is held, the cash and investments held at the balance date of that particular financial year.
It's identified that the benchmark set by the OLG is greater than three months. So does that mean that the cash as at balance date could, in a sense, last for a period of time sufficient to meet ongoing liabilities?
This ratio has been calculated in accordance with the methods set out by the OLG in its guidance and requirements for the performance benchmarks. And what it indicates is for 2024, the cash on hand for the council could fund 11.9 months of operating expenses in a cash sense. This measure includes restricted and unrestricted cash balances.
In a general sense, if you paid staff day to day outgoing for much years without receiving any further cash?
If it received no further cash inflows, it could meet 11.9, 11.9 months of operating expenses.
Operating ordinary day to day. That's what is within that concept.
But it includes both restricted and unrestricted.
That's correct.
Funds. That's a question I didn't ask you. The, the reference to restricted and unrestricted funds, what's your understanding that that's referring to?
Restricted funds can be, restricted cash or investments can be comprised of two sources. Those are externally restricted, so cash or investments that are restricted by law or statute or a contractual requirement with a counterparty or internally restricted. A council may have a policy to restrict certain cash or investments for a particular purpose. It's usually a policy matter and it's an internal restriction.
Just a general example divorced from this particular council, but of an external restriction of the kind you mentioned.
An external restriction may be developer contribution.
Again, hypothetically, if a local council received a particular grant from the state government for a particular project, according to the deed or legal requirements of that grant, there could be a requirement that that money be restricted?
There could be, but that would very much be based on the particular terms of the contract or agreement and the specificity to which those sort of restrictions are made clear.
You gave an, sorry, the example you just gave of contributions also a rate, particular rates dealing with, I think, waste?
That's right. Domestic waste management charges may be considered to be externally restricted.
And then the question of internally restricted, again, that's an internal decision by council that certain funds will be treated in that fashion.
I think I characterize them as a policy matter. It's a, it's a policy matter for the council.
It's a policy decision directed to using particular possible funds for a particular purpose.
If the council was minded to make an internal policy to restrict, yes.
When you're conducting an audit, oh, sorry, I'll start again. The identification of funds being subject to the external restriction, is that reflected in a separate bank account? Or are funds usually in the one council bank account that demarcated in a particular way?
It would be difficult for me to answer in a general sense. I think how I could answer is the financial statements, particularly a note to the financial statements required in these accounts would break down the balance of cash and investments held as both externally restricted or internally restricted. A council's particular banking arrangements and how they administratively put together their bank accounts is, is a matter of account. It'd be very hard for me to comment on.
Can you just excuse me for a minute? Within this document, could we move to page zero zero four zero? These are the notes to the financial statement. And you'll see this is headed C one dash three, restricted and allocated cash, cash equivalent and investments. If you look at the document at about point four, there's a reference to external restrictions other and then a list of particular items.
Yes.
And is it your understanding that that's some of the cash that the council had that was subject to either that, well, to that external restriction?
That's what this note in the financial statements is explaining.
And the example that you gave, the developer contributions, that appears to be the first item.
Under external restrictions other, yes.
Excuse me for a minute. We go back to zero zero nine nine, please. The cash expense cover ratio. I accept that it's one of the requirements of OLG. But from a practical perspective, what's the use or the utility of this ratio?
It's providing an overview of how long a council could operate without any cash inflow, based on its available cash at balance date.
Which is a measure of liquidity in general terms?
This is a measure of liquidity.
The higher the coverage, the greater the liquidity. To reduce it to bare basics?
On a scale, yes.
With the ratios that I've taken you to, which commence with the operating performance ratio. And if you need to have another look at them, we can take you to them. But of those ratios, which ratios really address liquidity? Obviously, the last one you've identified.
Our local government report looks at financial sustainability. So local government 2024 looks at financial state sustainability and it considered three ratios, one which is not reported here, around infrastructure renewal, operating performance ratio and the current ratio.
Right. That's reflected in the report to Parliament.
That's right.
We'll come back to that in, in a minute. We're still on, yes, zero zero nine nine. The heading infrastructure, property, plant and equipment renewals. This particular part records the money spent on. the money spent on renewal by the Council of Infrastructure Property Plant during the 2324 financial year. What is that? Why is that included there? What's its utility?
This part of the report on the conduct of the audit explains the dollar value that's been spent or expended on renewing existing property, plant and equipment or infrastructure in addition to expenditure on new assets, so new property, plant, infrastructure.
And why would somebody reading the financial statements be interested in that?
This provides an overview of the rate at which existing assets are being maintained or renewed. Plus a council's development of new assets, so new assets which are being brought onto the financial statements.
Now, I'm not going to take you to some other parts of this document which deal with an audit for special purpose financial statements or anything like that. Can I take you now to that report that you just referred to?
Just before you do, Miss, could I just raise one thing? And I'm certainly not asking you to express a view as to the utility or otherwise of the benchmark set by the OLG. But in each of the ratios that you've been taken to, it's been depicted for the three-year period. Is there any utility in general terms in looking at trends across periods such as that?
We present three years as a basis to try and provide a trend. A user of the financial statements could deduce the current year number, in this case, 2024, the prior year number, the comparative, in this case, 2023. We do consider that it's useful to the users of these reports and useful to the users of the financial statements to illustrate a trend.
Why isn't that?
Any of these ratios deal with matters evolving over time. Past performance is not a reliable predictor of the future, but it is a reasonable basis on which to form a view of the achievement of a council of any of these benchmarks. The period we've nominated in this report is three years. One may take a longer view, but we find this to be useful. We think that this is useful for the users of our report on the conduct of the audit to illustrate in general terms, our council's.
Thank you.
I'll take you now to MFI four, which is INQ 023 001 0040. Yes, please. Sorry, I'll keep on. Now, if you would have a look at the first page, it's the Local Government 2024 Financial Audit 31st of March 2025 produced by the Audit Office of New South Wales. Is this a document that's tabled in Parliament?
This document has been tabled in Parliament and my understanding based on the date is that would have been 31 March 2025.
I think it will be page 0041. It might not be any pages. The next page after the that's the indication that it was tabled in Parliament around the 31st, on the 31st of March.
That's correct, in accordance with the terms of section 421 of the Local Government Act.
Now, a general question to begin with, what is the purpose of this report?
This report is a requirement of section 421 of the Local Government Act, which, and I'll describe in general terms, requires the auditor general to make a report, at least annually, on the audits within the local government sector. And so this report has been designed to fulfill that purpose, to provide evidence or information around the conduct of our audits and themes that are important for the sector in a summary product. So this is not articulating detailed audit opinions on every council, but it is a summary of information across the sector.
Within the report, there is a section which deals with financial sustainability.
That's correct.
Which is section four. Can you excuse me for a minute? That is page 0021. Now, this chapter, as you've outlined, is a a chapter dealing with financial sustainability of councils, but is more in a summary fashion.
In the spirit and the requirement for us under section 421 of the LG Act to produce a report that covers the sector, it is a report which necessarily covers the sector, so across all 128 local councils plus the associated joint organisations and county councils.
In looking at financial sustainability, in particular, do in preparing this report, do you look at three particular performance measures?
In this particular report, we have looked at three performance measures.
And if we can go down the bottom of that page, are they the ones set out there?
That's correct.
If you can cross-reference to the section of the financial statements, the operating performance, that was a ratio that was considered in the report on the conduct of the audit?
That's correct. That was the first ratio that we discussed.
Then the second performance measure, the current ratio, was that the unrestricted current ratio that, again, we've looked at in the financial statements?
That's correct.
The final one, the infrastructure renewals, was that particular measurement, was that expressly considered in this report on the conduct of the audit?
That is not a ratio included in the report on the conduct of the audit.
Can you explain what's that ratio?
So this ratio measures the rate at which assets are renewed against the rate at which the assets on the books of a council are depreciated.
And again, what's the utility of that?
It provides an indication of the renewal of existing assets against the depreciation across the useful life of those particular assets that are held by the council.
And again, what is the, what information or what assistance do I gather from looking at that particular ratio?
Generally, assets recorded, non-financial assets recorded on a council's financial statements will have a useful life associated with them. And this measures it measures the rate at which drives the level of depreciation. So the useful life of an asset plus its value will drive the level of depreciation recorded. And this measures the rate at which those assets are depreciated against the rate at which they are renewed. So money spent on renewing infrastructure.
You've raised the depreciation of assets. The requirement for a council in its financial statement to that's not peculiar to council. That's a requirement of accounting standards, auditing standards?
It's a requirement of the Australian Accounting Standards and a requirement of the Local Government Accounting Code.
Is there anything peculiar or unusual in the way that councils are required to depreciate their assets?
Councils will generally be required to depreciate most classes of their assets. And there are exemptions in the accounting standards where you would not depreciate an asset. For example, land, which guide a reporting entity such as a council to determine its useful life or its value. So the value might have been the money that you paid for the asset at a point in time in which you acquired it or the construct of fair value, which councils are required to apply, where we mark the value of the asset over time to a fair value, often on a current replacement cost basis. But those are all requirements of the accounting standards.
I'm sorry, I just didn't catch the second part of that. Fair value, did you say?
There is a requirement for councils to mark their non-financial assets to fair value in accordance with a very particular requirement of the accounting standards, which is a requirement of the code. And that means that a council should report its assets with a reliable and reasonable level of reference to the price that may be in the market, often because of the nature of assets that councils hold, sewers, roads, et cetera, et cetera. That's a current replacement cost.
Can we go to page 0022? At the top of the page, there is this, 35 councils met just one or none of the three financial sustainability benchmarks. And then if you go further on that page, in the paragraph under the graph, there is a reference to, however, three councils. Bathurst Liverpool City Council and Shoalhaven City Council did not meet any of the benchmarks.
That's correct, of those three benchmarks.
And sorry, can we jump back to the infrastructure renewals? That ratio wasn't involved, included in the report. Why was it not included in the report?
On the report of the conduct of the audit, that particular ratio is based on a separate schedule to the financial statements. So there are a range of other schedules and special purpose financial statements which accompany the general purpose financial statements. The report on the conduct of the audit is on the general purpose financial statements, and that's why it doesn't appear in those terms in the report on the conduct.
And where on, if we go back to page 21 down the bottom, it says the benchmark must be greater than 100%. What does that mean?
That's an OLG requirement. And to infer greater than 100%, it means that assets are renewed, at least on the basis of which assets have been depreciated.
Sorry, say that again.
It means that assets are renewed, at least on a basis of which existing assets have been depreciated.
Would you return to page 22? And underneath the graph, there, I've just referred you to the identification of three councils that did not meet any of the benchmarks, which included Liverpool City Council. There then is a reference that Bathurst and Shoalhaven hadn't met any of the benchmarks for at least three years, and that indicates more serious concerns regarding their continued financial sustainability. The three performance measures in producing this report, are they the measures that are used by the Audit Office in compiling this report consistently over the last couple of years?
The nature of this report changes from time to time, but these are ratios that we can consider to be indicators of financial sustainability. Of course, they're presented in financial statements and included in our report on the conduct due to the accounting code and the OLG. But we've aggregated them here to provide a sector-level view.
The next paragraph refers to, we also calculated whether council's available cash and investments, not subject to external restrictions, were sufficient to meet three months of expenses excluding depreciation and borrowing costs. That particular calculation, is it reflected in one of the ratios that I took you to that are referred to in the report, or is that a separate calculation?
No, it is a separate calculation. It is similar to a measure in the benchmarks, but it is slightly different in its calculation logic.
Can you explain its calculation logic?
This analysis that the Audit Office has performed as part of this report considers the basis of available cash for a council at 30 June 2024, if we did not consider externally restricted cash and investments. So those cash and investments which are externally restricted and should otherwise be used only for that externally restricted purpose.
And looking at that pool of cash that isn't subject to an external restriction, it looks at whether that amount is sufficient to meet the council's three months of expenses, including certain expenses?
The ratio was to compare to whether or not the available balance of unrestricted cash and investments would be able to meet the ability to fund three months of expenses, adjusted for two items, including depreciation, which is non-cash.
Now, in that, the rest of that paragraph, there is a reference just generally to aggregate number of councils that either met that or didn't meet that. Can I take you in this report? And could you excuse me for a minute? Could we go to page 0069? Thank you. This is appendix four, council liquidity. You can see it, the top part, it talks about, we calculated whether council's available cash and investments were sufficient to meet three months of general fund expenses with the two exclusions. So this appendix is giving at least some more detail with the identification of certain councils for that test or ratio that I just took you to.
That's correct. Hopefully, if we've done our sums correctly here on the number of items in each of the tables, these will reconcile back to the paragraph we previously discussed, which included the summary trend. This is the detail behind it, the particular councils that are called out.
Under the heading least liquid councils, Liverpool City is included.
That's correct.
And what does that indicate with Liverpool City Council being included in that list under the heading least liquid councils?
This indicates that as at 30 June 2024, Liverpool City Council and the other councils listed in the least liquid councils table did not have unrestricted cash available to meet three months of operating expenses, as defined as part of the analysis.
So those councils didn't meet that.
That rule of thumb, or that's right?
Excuse me. Would we return to page 0022? And towards the bottom of the page. I'd taken you to the penultimate paragraph which looked at this calculation of available cash and investments not subject to external restrictions being sufficient to meet three months of expenses. At the bottom, the last paragraph says, it is crucial that all councils have effective long-term financial it is crucial that all councils have effective long-term financial plans that aim to ensure they meet key financial sustainability benchmarks. The reference there to key financial sustainability benchmarks, what are you referring to?
We're referring to the analysis that we have performed above. So the three ratios or performance benchmarks were specifically called out as being important. But more broadly, I think, and that's the basis of our, that's the basis of our conclusion there, in addition to our further analysis, which was the ratio which considered unrestricted cash's ability to fund operating expenses.
The statement that it's crucial that all councils have effective long-term financial plans, is that a matter that's been recently considered by Parliament? Indeed, the upper, I think it might have been the upper house or some kind of committee of the Parliament?
Financial sustainability has been considered by the upper house in the Parliament, and a committee has recently reported.
And that, can you give us the title of that report?
Not, not from my knowledge, no.
And your understanding of the report, does it make recommendations about either change or reform to councils' financial operations?
I'm, I'm not able to discuss those.
Mr. Medina, I want to move to an associated topic. As a result of conducting the audit, at times, issues identified by the Audit Office, which leads to a management letter being sent to the council, which raises some areas of concern.
Our usual practice in conducting financial audits, which is really bound by the requirements of the Australian auditing standards, requires us to communicate very particular matters with those charged with governance and management. Particularly if we identify matters associated with, say, fraud or wrongdoing, non-compliance with laws or regulations, weaknesses in, weaknesses in internal controls which support the preparation of the annual financial statements. Those are matters which we are required to report to management and those charged with governance. And the commonly accepted form and the way in which we would do that is in a written management letter.
The procedure, again, generally, with the issuing of a management letter, does it, excuse me, if the matters have arisen during the audit that the Audit Office considers should be raised in a management letter, is a draft management letter usually sent first to the council?
Our usual practice with management letters would be to, if we had a need to issue one, that is, we had identified, we would call them findings, that are more than inconsequential. So they met a threshold based on our professional judgment that they should be communicated. We would compile a draft management letter. It is a standard management letter that we use for all of our engagements. And we would generally share that with the recipient of the management letter for their feedback and comments, particularly on factual accuracy. But our findings will generally include a section for management comments and response.
And if the recipient council does raise factual matters, they can be taken into account with the final management letter that's issued?
We would afford the recipient of the letters, council or another one of our mandate audit entities, we would afford them the ability to comment, correct us where there may be a misunderstanding of the facts or factual accuracy in something that we're raising, and that's not uncommon. There may be a difference of view and some additional evidence may be provided that would ameliorate the finding or change our view on that finding. But it's, it's not uncommon for there to be a process where we would receive feedback from management.
Now, again, at a procedural base, a level, the final management letter is sent to the council. Is there any ongoing involvement by the Audit Office in the matters that you've raised in the management letter? Or is it a matter of, at the next audit, considering issues that were raised and whether they've been dealt with?
The, the primary purpose of the management letter is to fulfil our obligations to communicate with management and those charged with governance. Areas where there may be deficiencies in internal controls associated with the preparation of the financial statements, perhaps non-compliance with laws or regulations that have come to our attention, perhaps fraud, and I name those items because they are called out specifically in the auditing standards. We must, as engagement controllers, communicate those to management. But it is not our view to implement any findings. We are only an observer and we report our findings based on fact. Subsequent to the issuance of the letter, it is really a matter for management whether they agree or disagree with our findings or implement the necessary response to those findings. Perhaps it's an improvement in management internal controls, perhaps a policy procedure, whatever the issue may have been. But it's a matter for management to deal with.
Can we bring up exhibit L C C dot zero one one, dot zero, zero zero one, dot zero zero two zero? Now, that's the first page, Mr. Medina. Can you see this is addressed to Mr. Jason Brennan, acting CEO of Liverpool Council, dated the fourth of December twenty twenty four, entitled Management Letter on the Final Phase of the Audit, Audit for the Year-End of Thirty June Twenty Twenty Four.
I can see that information on the document.
And in the letter, it refers to, it outlines the first three dot points, matters of governance interest we identified during the current audit, unresolved matters identified during previous audits, and matters which we are, matters we are required to communicate under Australian auditing, auditing standards.
I can see that documented.
And then if we follow down this letter, you can see the paragraph, for each matter in this letter, we have included our observations, risk assessment and recommendations. The risk assessment is based on our understanding of your council. Management should make its own assessment of the risks to council. And then underneath that, three dot points which are recommendations to do the action about the matters raised in the letter.
I can see that's documented there.
Now, if we go to page zero 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 three, that's the first page of the final management letter.
It appears to be.
Actually, I probably should have gone to zero 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 two. You can see there again the signature block of Ms. Lee, Director of Financial Audit and her signature.
Consistent with our approach in issuing the independent auditor's report and the report on the conduct of the audit, communications such as management letter would be also issued by our engagement controllers.
Can we go to page zero 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 seven? This is a summary of issues for this particular management letter. And if I can just take you to the various subheadings, is prior year matters not resolved by management?
That would be our usual practice.
And you can see five items recorded there. The, for example, next to the, next to the first issue, you've got the matters of likelihood, consequence and risk assessment. Is your understanding they reflect the assessment of those matters that were contained in the management letter for the previous year, or are they updated?
As a general practice, and without having seen this management letter in, in detail, as a general practice, it would be, it would be our practice to consider the risk rating of any findings identified by us in prior periods or in the current period, and update a potential assigned risk rating based on likelihood and consequence for the facts and circumstances of that particular year.
If we move down that page, there's then a subheading, current year matters, and you've got items six through to fourteen.
I can see that on the page.
And does that record that they are matters that have arisen during that current audit that Ms. Lee considers should be specifically raised in this management letter?
Without going into the detail of the particular matters that are listed there, it would be my expectation that that subheading in our management letter templates and the guidance that we provide to our engagement controllers is where we would communicate items that had come to light at a particular period in the current year.
And if you go to page zero 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 eight, this is the first issue that had been raised in a previous management letter. And it sets out what the observation was, the implications of this matter, recommendations, management response, and also particular dates where it was anticipated the issue would be addressed by management.
In, in a general sense, whenever we report issues or findings as part of our management letters that we share with councils, we'd require a summary of the issue that we had identified to be articulated. That is, the thing that came to our attention, the implication of that thing, a recommendation that in our professional judgment may ameliorate the thing that has been raised. And there, as I mentioned before, be an ability for a council to comment or any audit identity to comment on our particular finding and observation.
The fact that these matters, the heading is prior year matters not resolved by management, do I take from that the usual procedure if a matter's raised in a management letter and then is adequately dealt with, according to the auditor for the next financial year, it then, in a sense, isn't referred to in the new management letter?
If a matter had been dealt with and we were otherwise satisfied that the original intent of our finding had been addressed or management's agreed action had been implemented, we would consider that matter closed and we would report otherwise on, in this letter in a subsequent part of the, a subsequent part of the pro forma, which would include a summary of matters that have been addressed.
Can you then move to page zero zero one three? Now, this is a current year matter, and you can see on the heading, issue number six, non-compliance in procurement process.
I can see the heading on the page.
And again, looking at the document, and I know you haven't prepared this document, but it would appear that, under observation, background is given particular matters that had been either observed or found during the audit?
This would be prepared, similar to any other management letter that we would prepare, and that we would set forth the facts or the particular observations, a recommendation, implications, and we would seek a comment.
So that's reflected in the heading, audit findings?
We would generally use this part of the document to set out the facts as we had seen them when we were undertaking our audit.
We go to the next page, zero zero one four. Then we have a, a heading, implications, and this would appear to be looking at the resultant risks that may arise?
In, in a general sense, the idea behind us reporting implications is to give a sense of the particular risks that may have crystallized, an event may have happened, or may happen if the matter had not been dealt with. But that's based on our professional judgment and as we see an interpretation of the facts.
And then the next heading is recommendations. And looking at it, it's your suggested recommendations that of action management can do to either eradicate control or minimize the risks.
Again, it would be our, our policy and our approach, consistent with industry practice, to make a recommendation in particular for any matters that we have identified. And we have identified that we would raise them as findings and formally communicate them. We would propose a suggested course of action. That being said, a council or the recipient of this letter may decide that it's appropriate to take another course of action. But that would be covered in a management response. This would just include information relating to our view of the facts and circumstances and a potential way to address the concern that we had identified.
Can you help me, if we can move down, you can see there is a heading, management response, and it's got agree. And then there are certain statements which appear to be what management at the council is going to do. The fact that it's got management response, agree, does that indicate before the issuing of the formal management letter, there has been discussion with council about this is our concern, agreement that it is a matter of, that council will deal with and deal with it in this particular fashion?
As a generalisation, and without reflection on this particular matter, it would be our practice to discuss these matters with management, our management contacts, to seek the facts and circumstances and to indicate that we may report a particular item in a management letter.
But it would appear that this actually has management response, agree?
We, we would provide a draft of our management, management letter to the recipient, to the council, and we would seek their comments. We would usually seek from a council whether they agree or disagree with a finding. It's well within a council's rights to disagree with our view on a particular set of circumstances. But we do like that for, for procedural purposes, to be clear. So we do ask them, management, indicate a very clear agree or disagree.
What happens if they disagree?
The matter would still likely be, as a, as a generality, if they disagreed on a matter of fact and we had interpreted, interpreted, interpreted the circumstances incorrectly, we may not end up reporting that matter in a management letter. If management disagree to something that we will be reporting and we do have a particular view on, it's a clear statement of management's position. But again, we will continue to report on that basis and we will share that information as part of the final report. We, we wouldn't remove it unless there was a factual basis of conclusions that was incorrect and we'd interpreted the facts wrong.
Again, at a general level, if there isn't agreement by the council that they will take certain steps, is it a matter of just raising that in the management letter? And does the Audit Office take it further in the immediate future?
I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to rise to my feet. The, just the way the, the, the question was framed, I didn't understand, I didn't understand that quite. This is evidence when it said, if there isn't agreement by, the question was, if there isn't agreement by the council that they will take certain steps. It, it wasn't clear to me that the answer was that agreement, ordered an agreement to take certain steps.
All right, well, perhaps that can be clarified in the way the question's put, and there'll be no uncertainty.
I've referred you to that section with management response, agree. And underneath there are, it would appear to be steps that the council has agreed that they will implement to deal with the particular risk. The, the response of, a management response of agree. The response of, a management response of 'agree', does that indicate first agreement as to the factual basis of the matter?
We would generally understand that to be an agreement with the factual basis of the matter that we have raised, whatever the finding may be.
Also agreement with the, for example, the implications, the increased risk that has been identified?
It's not possible for me to comment on that in a specific sense. Management may take the opportunity to offer a comment that they disagree with a particular rating that has been assigned. Now, that rating is professional judgment of the engagement controller based on the facts and circumstances that come to hand. But the council may have a different view or the recipient of this letter may have a different view on the types of risk that is otherwise, that otherwise could potentially crystallize or has crystallized.
And if that was the case, would that be recorded in the management response section?
Again, a matter for management as to the detail that they would otherwise record. We do provide them obviously the opportunity, management, to provide comments that are specific to the nature of that finding.
But if there was a response along those lines, it would be the practice to record it in this section of the document, likely.
I expect that this section of the management letter that deals with management comments to a particular item is verbatim that has been provided by the recipient of the letter.
Excuse me for a minute. Would we go to page 0024, please? Now, this is an appendix to the management letter. I think it reflects some evidence even a short time ago. It would appear that first there's a review of matters raised in the prior year management letters that are not yet due, an identification of a particular issue?
In a general sense, this part of the document is referring to findings we may have identified in previous periods. It would be our practice to not report on those again if the initial management response and identified or agreed action date was sometime in the future when that action date had not yet occurred.
And then you can see the next heading is 'Review of Matters Raised in Prior Year Management Letters That Have Been Addressed'. So this is the area where as you gave evidence, if a matter was raised in last year's management letter that has been dealt with by the council, that's where it's recorded.
It would be our practice to record all of the findings that we identified over a period of time and record a specific point in time during which audit that they had been completed and we would otherwise generally acquit that in a management letter.
The identification of, in the last management letter, we raised X and X has been dealt with adequately. Does that, the evidence supporting that conclusion, does that arise during the audit, the new audit?
In a general sense, that's correct. We would generally receive information. A council may provide us with additional evidence, they may walk us through a new process that indicates that they had dealt with a particular matter that addressed the original concern that we had raised. And we would look at that to the extent of identifying whether the design and implementation effectiveness of what had been put forward by management had otherwise occurred.
Excuse me.
Are you leaving this document?
Yes.
I think I know the answer to this, but at various times throughout this document, the risk assessment circles have appeared as variations of a full circle, a half circle or something otherwise. I assume that's just a printing or conversion to PDF issue rather than signifying a level of moderate risk, for example?
It wouldn't be our practice to present half circles in that way, so I assume it is a formatting matter.
Thank you.
If that can be taken down, please. Now, the practice of when a management letter is finalized, this management letter was addressed to the acting chief executive officer. In addition, is a copy of the management letter sent by the Audit Office to other, any other entity associated with the council, in particular the Audit Risk and Improvement Committee?
It would be our general practice to share this completed management letter, that is, a management letter which has been authorized for issue by our engagement controller with the council's Audit Risk and Improvement Committee. That would be a general practice.
So the general practice is to send another copy to that particular committee?
Yes.
Good. It's MFI 5 and it's document LCC-014-002-1411. Yes, please. Now, these are the minutes of that committee meeting on the 26th of February this year. You can see that there are listed first the committee members present. There are three names that appear there. I want to take you to the next list of people, which is under the heading ' observers', and in particular in that list are three from the bottom. Ms Lee, Director of Financial Audit Services, New South Wales Audit Office is recorded.
I can see that's documented on the page.
Now, I know you're not listed as attending in an observer capacity, but again, can I ask on a general level, the person from the Audit Office, and I'm sorry, is it the Audit Engagement?
The Engagement Controller?
Controller. Is it a usual practice that they are allowed to observe the meetings of an Audit Risk and Improvement Committee?
I think I can only provide a response at a general level. It would be a generally accepted practice that representatives of the New South Wales Audit Office would be invited to attend part, if not all, of an Audit Risk and Improvement Committee.
Do you know from whom the invitation is made? Is it actually the committee or the council?
I don't know that I'm necessarily able to answer with a specificity, but an invitation would be extended to the Audit Office to otherwise attend. The facts and circumstances behind that invitation for a particular council, they may differ who the invitation is sought by or provided by, whether it's in the terms of reference for that committee that the Audit Office is an attendee. It would be difficult for me to comment with a level of generality, but we would have a reasonable expectation that an Audit Office representative would attend most Audit Risk and Improvement Committees and be an invited attendee.
I'll just briefly show you MFI 6, which is LCC-014.002.1412, even if it can be live streamed. I just want to take you to the first page. These are the minutes for the 28th of April. Again, we've got committee members present and then a number of observers. Four from the bottom, Ms Lee appears again.
I can see that on the document.
And again, is that consistent with the evidence that you just gave? There is a general practice. The representative from the Audit Office is regularly invited to attend the committee meeting, maybe for a particular part or the whole meeting?
That would be consistent with my general expectation of the practice within the sector.
Could we go back to LCC.014.002.1411, which was the minutes of the 26th of February 2025?
At MFI 5?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's right.
And can we go to page 0007? Excuse me for a minute. You can see down the bottom of that page, section 7.2, Final Audit Management Letter, the financial year 2023-24.
I can see that on the page.
Again, does this reflect your expectation or general practice that the management letter that I've taken you to is forwarded to this committee and there is a consideration by the committee of the contents of that letter?
As a general, as a generality, we would expect that to be the case, without commenting on the particular item that's on the screen in front of me. We would have an expectation that at least our correspondence is shared with the head of the Audit Risk and Improvement Committee, and we would provide correspondence to them or to the secretary out facilitating that committee. And if the Audit Committee was minded to have this as an agenda item, we would obviously speak to it if we were asked.
So again, at a general level, your expectation if an issue arises and the committee would be assisted in the Audit Office representatives speaking to them, that can be done?
That's correct, and if in setting the agenda, a particular contribution is sought from the Audit Office, we would otherwise have our engagement controllers or staff available to speak to that item.
Can we then move to page 008? And you can, oh. You can see if we move down the page, there's a reference to 7.3, 2024 External Audit Engagement Plan. You see that?
I can see the title.
Then if we go to the next page, 0009, the second action item, the committee agreed to have a general catch-up meeting with the Audit Office to discuss general matters prior to the April 2025 committee meeting?
I can see that that's documented.
Again, as you're restricting your answers to general, at a general level and general practice, is that something that's often done or that you've come across that the committee would have a general catch-up meeting with the Audit Office?
It may be that our engagement controllers or audit teams from time to time meet with chairs or other members of audit committees to discuss matters, to prepare for audit committees, particularly if the Audit Office has been asked to come along and present on a particular item. That being said, our formal business is done in the open session of an audit committee. But it's not uncommon for relationships between members or chairs of audit committees and our engagement controllers. They're a key part, audit and risk committees are a key part of the accountability process for which we feed in information as part of our financial audits.
And is that function of the Audit Committee the reason why you would expect correspondence like a management letter would be shared with that committee?
That's correct, I would expect the information canvassed in our management letters is very relevant to the guidance material around what constitutes the functions of an audit risk.
Excuse me.
Thank you. Any party wish to leave two questions? Do you have any questions? Medina, that completes your evidence. Thank you for your attendance and assistance this afternoon.
I'm sorry, Your Honour, consistent with my,
Yes.
Sorry, Commissioner, consistent with my submission this morning, if Mr Medina could not be excused just for abundant caution in case a matter does arise subsequently?
What that means, Mr Medina, is I won't formally excuse you from further attendance, but someone will be in touch with you and as soon as we can release you formally, that will happen. And in the likely event you need to come back, someone will be in contact with you about that. Otherwise, you're ready to go for today. Thank you.
Commissioner, there is a matter that we wish to raise about the further conduct of the hearing.
Yes.
I have raised it with my learned friends. Mr Emmett just wants to have a quick word with me outside of the hearing. We anticipate it'll only be a couple of minutes. Could we just have a break, say five minutes and?
Why don't I come back at quarter two and if you need more time, someone can tell me?
Yes.
That suitable? All right, I'll adjourn till quarter to four. All right, I'll adjourn till quarter four.
Yes, at that time?
No trouble.
Commissioner, there is an application that the inquiry does not sit tomorrow. The basis of that application is, as outlined in Council Assisting opening yesterday, there were a number of summons that had been issued where there had not been compliance or complete compliance. Yesterday, I think late afternoon, evening, there was compliance or at least partial compliance with those outstanding notices to the extent that many documents have now been provided to the inquiry assisting team. And in addition, there we have been notified of some claims for legal professional privilege over some documents where, just looking at the title of the document, we have a question about whether the privilege can be maintained over that document. The result of that is, as for the approaching witnesses, in particular Mr Nudan and Mr Portelli, these additional documents we anticipate are relevant and some of them will need to be put to those witnesses. Trying to avoid the circumstances where a witness is not excused and then has to be recalled, which we would like to avoid, we would seek for the public hearing not to sit tomorrow so we can review those documents, discuss any documents over which there is an LPP claim where we want some clarification about that and then for the public hearing to resume on Thursday.
Resume with?
Again, this was part of the reason for the quick break about availability of witnesses.
Yes.
We would call Mr Portelli on Thursday.
Yes.
And then on Friday, we would deal with Mr Tim Porsley, who, Pasley, I'm sorry, who deals with the CROC and also questions of the circular economy.
Yes.
And also Mr Sheldon Rodriks, who again is looking at some interaction between councillor and staff in respect of a matter raised by constituents.
And Mr Portelli will be most of, oh, Thursday.
Yes.
Right, and how does that place us in terms of the overall hearing block? I know we are, but two days in, bearing in mind we get kicked out of here on the last day, but you're comfortable that that can be accommodated within the current sitting days?
Sorry, I'm just looking at. Yes.
Right. Does anyone wish to be heard on the application? Doesn't pose you any difficulty, Mr Emmett?
I'd be grateful to the Council Assisting for accommodating.
Of course.
And that proposed amendment to the Order of.
Yes, it doesn't pose anyone else any difficulty. All right, look, for the benefit of those who are watching in inquiries like this, these things happen and what happens in the hearing room is only a part and in some ways a smaller part of the overall machine. There is much to do outside of the hearing room and all council are satisfied that it can be accommodated within the hearing block. I'm satisfied that it's an efficient use of time not to sit tomorrow. Just moving forward in scheduling things, there is vast amounts of experience at the bar table. Amongst you, you want to discuss matters like this and then raise them with me as we go along. I'm happy for that to occur as we go to ensure it's efficient and we can use the most of the time we have. So we won't sit tomorrow. We'll resume, adjourn until 10am on Thursday. All right, we'll adjourn until 10am on Thursday.